We will call to order this meeting of the Linux School Committee. Please note, the meeting is being broadcast live on ctsbtv.org, channel thirteen oh two, and will also be rebroadcast on ctsb TV. First, I'm in business, this hearing of visitors, if there's any public comment. I think none, correspondence, I'm not aware of anything new. And that brings us to our board report and the meeting minutes of December ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of December ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They are approved. And with that, we're going a bit out of order today because we wanted to get to Randy first. So we will go straight to new business and re-discussion of what is going on with technology.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I really appreciate it. I would ask that everyone holds their questions till the end, if possible, only because I have another full-time job, which is taking my son to hockey every single day in Clifton Park. So if there's any time available, I do have to leave at six thirty. But if there's anything else and we want to have more discussions about this, please feel free to to connect with me. We can have more meetings and discussions. So thank you. Today, we embark on one of the most important conversations, I believe, of our time. A discussion about AI and why education must adapt today. I wanted to just give you a little bit of history on AI because these are some of the things that I learned in my research. AI is actually, the term was coined in the nineteen fifties at a conference. And I had no idea that it was seventy-five years old, or they started working on this stuff seventy-five years ago. No clue in some of the things that I was looking at. There was a decade where it was, there was a lot of kind of things going on with AI. And then the seventies and eighties, there were some periods of stagnation. They call it the AI winter. And this was because of basically unmet expectations and funding cuts. And I don't think that they truly had the technology back then to really do the things that we're starting to do today. The resurgence of AI was in the late nineteen nineties and two thousands. That was fueled by improvements in computational power, data availability, machine learning techniques. This is where applications like natural language processing and computer vision, leading to today's sophisticated AI systems. So what's the AI that we have today? Well, we have OpenAI's ChatGPT, we have Google Bard, and we have a million other AI systems. And really, it was basic, right? It can do some human-like text, it can create images, it can simulate natural conversations, which we're seeing now with the newest ChatGPT. AI is integrated into daily life through personal assistants like your Siri and your Alexa, recommendation systems like Netflix and Amazon, and navigation tools like Google Maps and Waze. Advanced AI algorithms, power technologies like autonomous vehicles, facial recognition, real-time language translation, and even medical diagnostics today. Current discussions focus on the ethical implications of AI, such as bias. What systems that we're using, can the system be biased? I'm sure it can. We were, as humans, programmed these systems, right? Privacy concerns, what the impact of jobs is going to be alongside efforts to establish global recommendations and frameworks. So when we go and we discuss AI, there's a couple different types of AI. What we have today is AI, which is artificial intelligence. And these AI systems are designed to perform a single task or a narrow range of tasks. Basic AI systems can react to specific inputs but lack memory, learning, and learning capabilities. Now AGI, which is the next step. Now, I use the term hypothetical very loosely because I believe that there are systems that are probably already doing this. But as the public, we don't know about those systems yet. I'm sure the big tech companies like the Microsofts and the Google, they're getting very close to this artificial general intelligence. So that's the ability to understand, learn, and perform any intellectual tasks that a human can. Future AI systems capable of understanding emotions, beliefs, and intentions to interact socially. Now we have super artificial intelligence. And that's, it's speculative, but it possibly could be coming. And that's a future that AI surpasses human intelligence in all fields, including creativity, problem-solving, and social intelligence. Hypothetical, very much so at this point. But it could have a consciousness and self-awareness, just like us, and understanding its essence and reasoning about itself. I don't think we're there yet, but it's totally possible that AI could get to that level of being a human or having human emotions and a consciousness. Now, we don't even know what consciousness means, so we can't program that because as humans, we truly don't know what it means to be conscious. But that's a whole nother conversation for sure. So, and I'm going to read all of this only because of the fact that I could not memorize all of this information. So what is our responsibility? Number one, preparing students for the AI era. Why? The workforce will require a strong understanding of AI concepts, tools, and ethics. Students need to develop skills that complement AI, such as critical thinking, creativity, and emotional intelligence. Our responsibility is to integrate AI literacy into the curriculum, e.g. coding, machine learning basics, and especially ethics of AI. We should expose students to real-world applications of AI to inspire them to prepare for a career in AI. Two, empower teachers with AI tools. Why? Teachers are the key to effective education, and AI can assist them by automating administrative tasks and providing personalized learning and insights for students. Our responsibilities: Train teachers to use AI tools effectively, such as adaptive learning platforms and AI-driven assessments. Provide ongoing support and professional development to help educators integrate AI seamlessly into their teaching practices. Ensure equity and accessibility. Why? AI has the potential to exacerbate existing inequalities if not implemented thoughtfully. Ensuring equitable access to AI tools is critical for inclusivity. Responsibilities: Provide AI resources and tools to all students regardless of socioeconomic background. Bridge the digital divide by offering devices, internet access, and training to underserved communities. Foster ethical AI use. Why? AI raises ethical concerns such as data privacy, bias, and the potential for misuse. Schools must model responsible AI use to build trust and safeguard students. Our responsibilities: Protecting student data by using secure and transparent AI systems. Ensure AI tools used in schools are free from bias and promote fairness. Educate students and teachers about ethical implications of AI. Collaborate with stakeholders. Why? Successful AI integration requires input from educators, policymakers, parents, and tech companies. Responsibilities: Work with AI developers to create tools tailored for education. Improve or involve parents and communities in discussions about AI in schools. Advocate for policies that support ethical and equitable AI use in education. Promote lifelong learning. Why? AI is evolving rapidly. And both students and teachers must adapt to its continuous advancements. Responsibilities: Create a culture of lifelong learning where AI tools help everyone stay updated. Encourage teachers to experiment with new AI technologies and share best practices. Implementing AI in schools is not just about adopting new technologies. It's about reimagining education to prepare students for a world where AI will play a central role. As stewards of this transformation, educators and administrators have a duty to ensure AI enhances learning, supports teachers, and empowers students while upholding ethical and equitable practices. One of the tools that I'm looking at right now for teachers is a program called Brisk. Brisk is implemented into Google Chrome, it's as an extension. And it will help teachers, because one of the things that I'm seeing now, and I had asked a lot of teachers here, why isn't everyone asking me about AI? How come, like, this should be the number one thing on your mind right now? And the number one reason was because we're burnt out. So if AI can help teachers not be so burnt out and focus their time on the students and not some of those tasks that take up a lot of their time, I think that's one way that we could change the way that we're teaching our students and helping teachers, which to me, again, is the most important feature. So I'm going to go through a quick video, real quick, on Brisk. It's only a minute long. But I just wanted to show you some of the small little features that AI and Brisk can do for our teachers.
Teaching is time-consuming, and we know there are tedious repetitive tasks that can take away from all the time focused on learners and your well-being. Brisk is here to help. Change the reading level of news articles. Generally personalized curriculum at a couple of places. Then, when your students have finished their assignments, provide your learners with more feedback opportunities by letting Brisk take a first pass and analyze class progress and growth areas without having to read through every assignment, understand the effort students put into assignments, and detect students using ChatGPT. Install Brisk, so you can work less and teach more.
So just a really great tool. We have started this. Right now, the teachers, of course, are using the free version. And as we know, the free version of anything is limited. So that is something that I am looking into for, to purchase the real version for everyone. But there are so many applications out there right now. I get a new email about an AI program every single day. And to try to figure out which ones are best is very difficult. So that's why I enabled this app for teachers to kind of use on that evaluation level to see if there are things that they could actually utilize it for, which it seems like there are a lot of great tools in there to do that. So steps to implement AI for students. Integrate AI into the curriculum. Introduce AI literacy courses to teach students the basics of AI, machine learning, and ethical considerations. Add AI-related topics to existing subjects, such as coding and computer science, data analysis and math. Use project-based learning to allow students to experiment with AI tools. Adopt AI-powered learning tools. If anyone has heard of an application called Khan Academy, which was an unbelievable application that kids could use to learn about math and other subjects, he is now inventing his own tool for AI. And the interesting thing about his AI is that if a student says, write me an essay on Abraham Lincoln, it'll tell them, I can't do that, but I will help you make that essay. So that's a really cool tool, but the AI isn't as powerful as a ChatGPT. So, but it's getting there. But I feel like that's another tool that we could possibly look to implement for teachers and students. It kind of has both, not just for teachers, but for students as well. We need to provide AI access, provide access to AI tutors for additional support in subjects like math and science. Incorporate AI-powered tools for language learning, STEM simulations, and creative tasks like writing and art. Train teachers to use AI effectively. Offer professional development programs on how to incorporate AI tools. Teach educators to use AI for grading, student progress, tracking, and personalized planning. Provide resources for teachers to experiment with AI in the classroom. Ensure equity and accessibility. Provide devices and internet access. Use AI to create inclusive learning environments, such as language transmission. I think we should start small, and we should increase, but it definitely has to start small. I don't think you can push all of this AI stuff right away on teachers or students. It's just going to become, it's just going to be a mind dump, and it's not, it's not good. Partner with AI developers to access cutting-edge tools that are tailored resources for education. Invite experts to workshops or career talks to inspire students. Emphasize ethical AI use. Teach students about data privacy, algorithmic bias, and ethical implications of AI. Ensure that AIs are used in school that are transparent, fair, and secure. Pilot AI programs in a few classrooms to assess effectiveness. Gather feedback from students and teachers to refine the implementation process. Expand successful AI initiatives to more schools and grade levels. So this next slide I'm going to show you. Bill came to me and he said, what do you think the future classroom is going to look like? I don't know what the future classroom could look like. However, during one of our admin meetings, we had asked ChatGPT what the future classroom looks like, and I'd like to show you that slide right now. So the really, and we think about this, we're like, well, could we ever afford something like this? Like, I don't think so. But that's what ChatGPT said the future of schools will look like in five years. Now, if we look around that room, what do we not see?
Teachers.
Yes. Now, we had asked ChatGPT where the teachers were, and they said the teachers were helping in other areas, which could be. We also asked what the problems could be with this. Like any other technology, your internet goes out, a projection screen doesn't work, the central hub doesn't work. There's so many things in this picture that could go wrong. But I did just want to show you this picture because I thought it was really interesting to see what, what this system thought that a future classroom would look like. So this one, we talk about ethics and we talk about what's happening with AI. This is what China's doing. And I bring this up because what you're going to see here is something that we would never do, I hope. However, it's important to know that other countries are starting to do things like this.
Teachers at this primary school in China 蓝色它九十了 know exactly when someone isn't paying attention These headbands measure each student's level of concentration. The information is then directly sent to the teacher's computer and to parents. China has big plans to become a global leader in artificial intelligence. It has enabled a cashless economy where people make purchases with their faces. A giant network of surveillance cameras with facial recognition helps police monitor citizens. Meanwhile, some schools offer glimpses of what the future of high-tech education in the country might look like. Platforms have robots that analyze students' health and engagement levels. Students wear uniforms with chips that track their locations. There are even surveillance cameras that monitor how often students check their phones from yon during classes. These gadgets have alarmed Chinese citizens. But schools say it wasn't hard for them getting parental consent to enroll kids into what is one of the world's largest experiments in AI education, a program that's supposed to boost students' grades while also feeding powerful algorithms. The government has poured billions of dollars into the project, bringing together tech giants, startups, and schools. We got exclusive access to a primary school a few hours outside of Shanghai. Let's see firsthand how AI tech is being used in the classroom. For the Smith grade class, the game begins with putting on a brainwave sensing gadget. Students then practice meditating. The device is made in China and has three electrodes, two behind the ears and one on the forehead. These sensors pick up electrical signals sent by neurons in the brain. The neural data is then spent in real time to a teacher's computer. So while students are solving math problems, a teacher can quickly find out who's paying attention and who's not. A report is then generated that shows how well the class was paying attention. It even details each student's concentration level at ten-minute intervals. It's then sent to a chatbot for parents to look The reports are detailed, but whether these devices really work and what they exactly measure isn't right here. We were curious if the headbands could actually measure concentration, so one of our reporters turned on the device. Theodore Zanto is a neuroscientist at the University of California, San Francisco. He was surprised to learn that this tag called electroencephalography, also known as EEG, is being used in the classroom on children. It's usually used by doctors in hospitals and labs.
EEG is very susceptible to artifacts. And so if you are itching or just a little fidgety or the EEG wasn't measured properly so that the electrodes didn't have a good contact with the signal.
Despite the chances for false readings, teachers told us the headbands have forced students to become more disciplined. Teachers say the students now pay better attention during class, and that has made them study harder and achieve higher scores. Not all students are as enthusiastic. This fifth grader whom we caught dozing off in class told us his parents punish him for low attention scores. And that kind of data adds a new kind of pressure for students. Companies we interviewed said the data can go to government-funded research projects. We spoke to parents who were unclear about where the data ended up, and they didn't seem to care too much. Santos says there's likely no privacy protection at all.
In a classroom, if you're trying to make an assessment of an individual student, you really can't anonymize it.
Experts and citizens alike are sounding alarms about various aspects of the country's huge push into artificial intelligence. These classrooms are laboratories for future generations. And while these new tools may potentially help some 200 million students raise their grades, just how this all works out won't be apparent until they become adult citizens.
So yeah, that's what
And then there's the
other countries are Now, this next video, a little bit short, but this next video is what I think is going to happen. I think a lot of schools, as you're going to see here, will start popping up all over the country. And we could possibly start losing kids in public education to something like this. Now, the problem with this that I see is that it's very expensive to go to. So you have kids that can't afford something like this, and those kids could possibly be left behind. It would be really great if the public schools at some point could offer something like this to keep kids engaged.
As artificial intelligence tools like online chatbots become more prevalent, some schools are figuring out how to bring those tools into the classroom.
One private school in Austin isn't just letting students use those tools. It's relying on them to teach core subjects. Kevius Darian Shaheer explains.
A school with no teachers? It sounds like a nightmare. But Mackenzie Price, the co-founder of Apple Private Schools, says it's actually the wave of the future.
What we do have is a lot of adults who are in the room engaging with these kids, working as coaches. So they're helping the kids get clear on like, what are some goals that they're working on? What are they doing academically?
So how do they learn? The students work one-on-one with artificial intelligence for two hours at the start of the day.
So it's the educational information that regular schools are also teaching with. But AI apps are feeding them to students at the appropriate level and pace that they need.
It goes as far as historical figures explaining their own histories.
We believe that education should adapt to every student's unique needs and interests.
To basic comprehension quizzes, fifth grader Byron loves the instant feed which he says he didn't get in public school.
It explains a detailed explanation of why the correct answer is correct, not just saying, oh, here's your correct answer, you can answer the question this way next time.
Price says the lessons are customized for every student.
As we can say, provide reading material at this certain lexi level, which is eighth grade, but appropriate for a seven-year-old kid.
I think it's making me actually learn things, not just looking at things I'm watching.
This style of learning goes from twelfth grade down to kindergarten.
Did you meet your two-hour learning goal today? You guys can ever do some silent farmers for Lola.
They learn more than twice as much as standard school does in six hours.
The other six hours of the day are set aside for learning life skills. Like this third grader, putting together an IKEA drawer in an hour, or eleven-year-olds writing and submitting college admission essays.
They don't know our age, so they're going to let us know if he would accept us into the school and if he wouldn't. If he says yes, or she, we will get a check.
All things that some schools may feel hesitant to embrace, but Price believes will become the new norm in modern schools. In Austin, I'm De'Ariana Shaheer for K V News.
So we're getting a little short on time. I'm not going to have much time for any questions and answers. However, I would love to come back again if there are questions that you certainly have. I have one slide left, and this one slide, I thought, how could I use AI to make my final slide? So at first, I took a picture of my wife and I and had it speak my last slide. But my kids thought that was really corny, and it didn't look great. But so what I ended up doing was I used another tool. And what this tool does is it actually allows you to You can create your own avatar.
AI-driven future, the urgency
So right here is my avatar.
As we stand on the threshold of an AI-driven future, the urgency to integrate artificial intelligence into our schools has never been clearer. AI isn't just another technological trend. It's a transformative force that is reshaping industries, redefining work, and reimagining how we learn and grow. By implementing AI in our education system, we have an unprecedented opportunity to empower our students with the skills, knowledge, and adaptability they need to thrive in a rapidly evolving world. a rapidly evolving world. We can provide teachers with the tools to focus on what truly matters, inspiring and connecting with students. And we can finally begin to bridge the gap between the classrooms of the past and the demands of the future. Let us embrace AI as a partner in education, not as a replacement for teachers, but as a powerful ally in creating more inclusive, innovative, and effective learning environments. The steps we take today will not only shape the success of our students, but will also define the role of education in building a brighter tomorrow. Together, we can ensure that our schools remain the foundation of opportunity and progress in the age of AI.
So what I did was, there was this particular website, you're able to create your own avatar, and this is what I did. And I put the words in there, and it spoke whatever I wanted to say. Now, you can also, and this was the free version, so the paid version, of course, offers you where you can put yourself into the slide, and it will speak for you. I also wanted to try to see if there was, well, could I have Abraham Lincoln saying these words? And there are ethical concerns to that, because then you can start putting things online, saying, look what Abraham Lincoln said, or look what Trump said, or look what Biden, you know what I mean? So you gotta be very careful nowadays of what you're looking at, because there are, these are called deepfakes, and there are things like, I'm sure you've already seen it, so there are things like this that we have to be very careful of. And the last thing that I wanted to say with these deepfakes is that someone could call your child impersonating you, impersonating your phone number, and basically saying, hey, honey, it's your mom. I wanted to let you know that Jack's gonna be picking you up today. I know you don't know him, but he's gonna be driving a white van. Okay, I gotta go, but I just wanted to let you know, right? So one very important part of that, to stop that, is to have a safe word with your kids. When something like that happens, the child say, hey, what's the safe word? And obviously, that caller wouldn't know what the safe word was, or the robot, or whatever it was called. So that is where I'm gonna end it today, and I really apologize, but if I don't get this kid to hockey, he will be very upset. But I would love to come back again if you do have questions, which I'm sure we always will. This is going to be an ongoing conversation that we need to have. So I will come back, we can have our own sessions, whatever you would like. I would like to continue this conversation, and I do apologize for having to leave.
I have a very quick question. Could we get the slide presentation that you sent to us, please?
Hundred percent.
Thank you. Rather than, I was trying to like, it's like, I'm just gonna have.
No, no, it's great.
Thank you very much.
No problem at all. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Is anyone else projecting this?
They will be, yes.
Okay. At least, you want me to leave it on or turn it off?
Yeah. Leave it on.
Well done. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
God.
Be safe.
It worked.
We will have to come back to the tech topic, I don't know if anyone else wants to discuss everybody now, or we can plan another session.
Right, because I do understand that the piece was, this was AI, but the idea was in the context of our strategic plan and where are we with all of our tech? And we'll bring him back and have that conversation.
Yeah, I think that was the question, sort of, because there's also like the physical plant stuff, which you know, there was a whole laundry list of things that had to get done since Randy fit on board, and it would be good to kind of know. And I know some of that's also wrapped up into building decisions and things like that, things that might make more sense to be on hold, et cetera, but it might be good to have kind of that level of understanding too, especially as we get into budgets.
Okay, highlights and recognitions. So we are approaching 90 days for Assistant Principal Sewell with us, and Principal Kelly wanted to make sure that there was a shout-out about what an outstanding job that she's doing and how pleased she is.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We'll look at you soon.
And with Principal Kelly's CIA director hat on, she wanted to let you know the middle school is doing benchmark assessments, winter benchmark assessments, and they're having data meetings, six through eight, which is ahead of our, which is ahead of our schedule for her work. Yeah, very exciting. The, you, the school committee tasked me with putting a survey out to families that were residents but did not elect to send their children to LPS, and so that, that went out. Anyone who left within the last two years or is homeschooling, because those are the emails that we, that we have. If somebody's never come here, I don't necessarily have their contact information. But that, that closes, that closes on Wednesday, and I'll have, I'll have more information. An awful lot of the folks that left, the schools make a notation, and a lot of it was, they were moving out of state or something like that, but I, but I'll have all that data for you. Additionally, to Mr. Rimmler's point, the last meeting was that when we did the Thanksgiving Day survey for, for families, while about 80% said yes, five days, that's wonderful, there was 20% that it wasn't their first, it wasn't their, it wasn't their first preference. Now, I've got the, I've got the survey results, and I will be sharing those out with, with families, hopefully tomorrow. But of that, 70% of those people, just so you know, said, well, it wasn't our first preference, it doesn't present an issue for us, so that's, that's good. We're really down to, to boil it down, five, there were five families in this subsequent follow-up study that said, yeah, this is, this is an issue, and trying to figure out the best way to address that. But it is 1.5% of everyone that responded to the survey, but I'm, but I am glad that you brought it up, and we followed up with that. Additionally, the second grade class, Mrs. Simonelli's second grade class, was one of 12 across the state that were selected to name a snowplow. And so on the 21st, Snowana, the, the snowplow, one of two snowplows in District One for the Mass DOT will be coming to Morris, so the students can see. They put a big decal on the side of this massive truck, and the students will be able to see it. I mean, yeah, very, very exciting. I wanted to say also that the alumni corner has, has taken off. People are nominating people. We've got now a long list. Please continue to nominate, folks. And it doesn't have to be someone that was here a long time ago, be someone who's a recent graduate. We are, you know, we'd like to have a real cross-section that we're featuring, but it's, but it's taking off, and that's, and that's exciting as well. And then, the, I am asking if, you may know that the delayed start, my idea for delayed start was a bit of a dud, and in March, we have one more, so if it is all right, you don't, you don't need to vote, just one tweak to the calendar, but I'd like to get out to families to move that to be an early dismissal. I thought that the delayed start might mix it up and allow, allow it to be a little different. What, what had happened is, where it came from is Dr. Ames took two groups to a like school last year, and one of the things they raved about was their delayed start schedule, so we tried it, and it, it wasn't raving here.
Raving of a different kind.
Raving of a different kind. So I will get that if, if you're amenable to it, I'll get that out to families, and we'll change it to it. An early dismissal.
Okay, good.
Yes. All right. That is, that's all the highlights and recognitions I have, and then next, we have on a, on a regular basis, and I think that Dr. Ames would be able to speak to some of their questions, but on, on a fairly regular basis, basis, our Nordic ski team needs to go, depending on snow and conditions and different things, they need to go across the border to, to do a practice or a competition in DuVermont. And technically speaking, via our policy, they are, they, to go out of state, they need your approval. So what we're looking for is, is there a blanket, not for when they go to Whiteface Mountain or a field trip like anyone else would, but when they are doing, when routinely in the nature of the Nordic ski team, the practice needs to happen in Vermont, can they have that permission without having to come every single time? And, and that is a topic for vote.
Well, is that, say, something that cannot necessarily be scheduled because it's weather, because it can be weather-related, or will they know that I'm gonna be going, you know, the, like, in other words, can we do a blanket permission on specific dates, or is it so weather-related that it's blanket permission?
I think what we're looking for is the season, but Dr. Ames, is there something?
Yeah. So we're really, we're really talking about one location. It's Wood, it's Prospect Mountain in Woodford, Vermont. It's, it's not fair to say it's just over the border, but essentially, you go to Bennington, you take a right, and you go up the mountain. All of our kids have skied there before, we're very familiar. We really only have, we ski in the basin, Butternut, we ski at Natchoo, and we will go often to Woodford, to Prospect Mountain. We schedule some of them, but it's often if a race might get moved there at the last minute, if we just don't have enough snow at Natchoo, and it's, it would be, it would be impossible to, to schedule a quorum and come before you and ask for a vote every time. It's not to say that we couldn't talk to you about the dates that we know we're gonna be there in advance, but it really does require a little bit more flexibility than a lot of the votes we ask for until.
So I have prepared a motion, because we talked about it at the prep meeting. Unless, so mine and Amy has the text, so it's Nordic skiing practices and competitions. I move to approve out-of-state travel for the Nordic ski team when practices and competitions require. Locations of practices and competitions will be routinely shared with administration, team members, and families. That was kind of the idea.
And then the administration, Dr. Ames and Dr. Collins would have final say, you know, if it's, if it's a go or no go without it having to come to the committee, correct?
Yes, and again, we're gonna loop back around, because there is a Nordic field trip request that would be separate from this, that we'll be asking for, but yes, this, this is just because it is the nature of how, where we are in the Berkshires and the availability, yeah.
This is the text, oh, sorry. This is the only sports that goes out of state, like your basketball, stays, this is the one that goes out of state.
Right, if, if anything else did, they would, they would come to you. If it was, if it was something that was either overnight or out of state, it requires your, but, but this one, and it, and it just recently, it just recently happened, where they, they went out, and we were like, we, yeah, we need to address this.
The way I worded it, Mike, was routinely shared. Do you feel like it would be better if it said routinely approved?
I would say.
By administration, by administration, and shared with team members and families?
I, I, that's how I would feel. I think that would be appropriate if anybody else is.
So I'm happy to just amend my own motion to say that.
And my one other thought was just that it should be for the 24, 25 school year, so it probably should be something that gets refreshed once a year.
Agreed, yes.
Approved by administration. Okay. It's fine, I just wanna get it so that we know what, and what I did here is. A little bit different, because it's, it was an email. All right, so I move to approve out-of-state travel for the Nordic ski team, for the, for the 24, 25 season of the Nordic ski team.
What was that?
I'll get this to you, Amy.
I'm working.
Okay. Okay. When practices and competitions require, locations of practices and competitions will be routinely approved by administration and shared with team members and families. Does that work?
Something about not overnight.
And overnight travel would still require specific approval?
Overnight travel would still require specific approval by the school committee. He said.
If you say it, then I can fit it all in one motion and not make it.
She just said it, though, to repeat me.
Yes, so it's in. You can take out the editorial that he said.
Beautiful. Well, I thought that was a fine motion.
Is that your second move?
I'm not supposed to second that.
I have a second.
Bob is second.
He's sitting right next to me.
There you go.
It's a good team effort.
Further discussion, if now would be a good time to amend the motion, if anybody had an amendment? All right, all in favor?
All right. Thank you for making things more seamless. Appreciate it. Now, back would be an out-of-state trip that will require your approval on an individual basis.
We can test our new process here.
Thanks for seeing me today. We are looking at our annual ski trip again. We've been doing this now for, well, I've been here for 20-something years, and it's been happening before that, so we're looking to take the team up to Lake Placid again. This year, we'll have all the coaches going. Three of us will be staying at the hostel that we've been using for all that time. The hostel has a kitchen, we do our cooking there. It's about four miles or so from Mount Van Hovenburg where we ski, and the students have a fee of approximately $200, $250. We try to keep it as minimal as possible, and that includes everything except for, we'll take one evening and go into town, where kids will go ice skating, maybe get some cocoa or something of that nature in the little village, and all the adults will accompany them. That's usually a, you know, a standard routine that we've been following a lot of the years. We asked to go later in February, February, now I gotta get the dates in my head again, because I did.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty through twenty-third.
The second.
So it'd be.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So it'd be Thursday to Saturday. We'll stay over two nights, ski three days. We'll leave here on Thursday, approximately seven or so in the morning, and we'll return probably about five or so on Saturday night.
Yep.
And the coaches will be there for everything, working with the kids. Some parents I know are going up and will be staying at their own locations, but they're always around as well, so it's kind of a nice atmosphere while we're there.
All right.
Do you want to ask permission for the school van as well?
I, I recommend that this annual trip takes place and that they would be allowed to use the school van.
Well, I move to approve the field trip request for the Nordic ski team as outlined, and.
My second.
That's.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sounds great.
All right, next up is the outdoor classroom field trip overnight request.
Good evening, members of the school committee. I think I know most of you. I'm Rick Sanders.
I'm part of the sixth grade team. Thank you for allowing me to ask for my proposal tonight. I believe most of you are familiar, I'm sure you're all familiar with Nature's Classroom. Mrs. Corey Katie comes every year and asks permission for an overnight excursion to Nature's Classroom. But what you might not know is traditionally, it's been a sixth-grade trip, and we're trying to restore that program back to the sixth grade. And we're trying to restore that program back to the sixth grade. So we really don't want this year's sixth grade class to miss out for an opportunity to go on it because of the wonderful hands-on, minds-on activities they do, the team building program they have, and if you were weirded out by those headbands and the AI, I mean, it's 48 hours away from any technology, which is kind of cool. So our, we were able to secure a few dates in April, right before April break. It would be the 15th, 16th and 17th. Our plan would be to get there around lunchtime on the 15th and then come back on the 17th for the end of the day. We already have chaperones lined up. We still need to let the parents know and make sure that there's a desire for the parents to go, but I, every year it's been, the kids really want to go. And I would assume that next year we would try to go again in April so that this, when the sixth graders come in, they're not starting the year off learning a new building and going on a trip right away. So we would do it again in April so they would have some time to get used to us and have some confidence going into the April break with a trip.
So the city of 67 students attending and one, two, three, four chaperones definitively is, consists if Kelly Korgati attends, is she admitted to that?
She, well, she says if we need her, she would be happy to go.
Are you comfortable with four, four chaperones to six, to 67? I know it's not typically the ratio when you're.
Yeah, I mean, it was, every year where I went, it was always four. And it's really, the teachers are only there supervising at night. It's basically the camp counselors are there with the kids almost the rest of the time. And then the, the ratio is much better. And I go to all the classes with the kids every year that I would go.
Same Great Barrington?
Yes, this is the Great Barrington trip, so I haven't been there. It was Camp Jewel and we had this wonderful cabin across the lake that we would get every year, which was awesome. So I, I haven't been to Camp Isner yet, but I've gone on Nature Classroom probably seven, eight times and it's been a wonderful trip every time.
So I just, I do have a concern with this one. Because this is, so these sixth graders would be doing it, because what you're saying, I think is they had shifted over time to eighth grade.
They went to, was sixth grade, went to seventh grade. Seventh grade went this year. But they think that developmentally is probably more appropriate for sixth grade kids, like the activities they do and the lessons that they learn. So to get the best, best feedback or the, the best use out of the program is probably better to go to sixth grade. But if we waited till next year, this year's sixth grade class would not get a chance to go.
So I have to start to say, I can bring this up, is particularly this one, I think the trip to Washington may seem very embedded in academics and in.
Including some social emotional supports around students and their engagement, the developmental appropriateness. And the, I'm not saying that $325 isn't appropriate. There's, there's basically camp faculty there and it's a great location. It just feels like for some families, $325 is a significant amount. This is an academic field trip. We have other field trips that I think are a little bit more enrichment. And so I, I don't know, we do it budgeting every year and I don't really know how this year's fleshing out because this would be in this year's budget. But I just really would love to see us find a way to have some of our funds, be able to pay for at least a portion of that. It's like $325 for every single family. Some families, it will not be a stretch, but it's a significant amount, especially if they have multiple kids. And this one and that 10th grade, or is it 10th grade now, the DC, those seem very embedded in academics as opposed to more of a enrichment kind of thing. So I, I don't know. I mean, we could approve this and if there's funds available to offset it, that might be great. We have until April to take a look at that. I don't know, but I would just love to see us identify certain field trips as being our cost because they're integrated in academics.
This is, if I may, this is, so this is something near and dear to my heart. I, the whole equity thing about ability to pay. For, for, for this one, seeing that it wasn't pre-budgeted, I guess my question would be, because I can work with Melissa and see if we can, right, get this down to what, what is, what is a reasonable, understanding that we're working toward getting to a place where, where if it's part of our program, our academics and all the students are going, that we'd love to have all the costs covered. But seeing that just where we sit right now, is there a, is, is there a dollar amount that you'd like to see me shoot forward, Melissa?
Well, I was, I totally agree with Ronnie about this in principle. It came up for a policy review also, and we sort of tabled it for finance discussion and budgeting for future years. Up, up till this point, we have had the fee. So was like, did the seventh graders who went in the fall, did they have to pay for pad assistance if they needed it?
There's probably some help for some of the, and I could see maybe two families this year that might run into that same problem for sure. But I, I haven't sat on a survey yet to see if there's greater need than that, yeah.
Yeah. My one thought is just that if it's sort of kind of practice and we've literally already done it the other way this year, that we sort of close out the year that way, but that for this year's budget, looking to next year, we dress it?
How, how about if we do something that is, that can be completely confidential, maybe even to, to my office, right? That a family could let us know if they're in a spot and we could help figure out that so that anyone who wanted to identify without identifying to their students, teachers or to, to their, their peers, that, that their family needed the help, maybe?
Well, we already have, I know you've brought up sort of the Walker Fund and doing a better job, calling attention to it.
Yeah, I, I think they're regrett, not regrettably, I think we have this discussion in these episodic moments, enough on a regular basis that, that perhaps, you know, if the finance committee is looking at it on a broader level, we, we should really consider what our, what our position is and what our capabilities are. And, and so we have a cohesive, you know, plan going forward in terms of what we can and cannot do.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think that's the way we should do it.
And then the other question I have, because it's, I mean, April's not far away, but if there is the ability to give the caveat to please identify if this is a hardship, but to also say, do we have funds for supplies or things that have gone unexpended? I mean, before the end of the year, there's often some discretion of saying, we, you know, we have this amount of money and we didn't spend it all. So maybe there is still the ability to make a reasonable line item movement because we do that, to make this less expensive. But then looking forward toward policies around this and making sure it's included in the budget.
Just out of curiosity, you know, with this at, you know, about $325, does anybody recall what the cost was, you know, per student to go to DC?
It's $225, I think they shared.
$225?
Getting out to go.
I was just curious.
Mr. Sanders, do we have any considerations for students who may have disabilities or whatnot with Camp Isner? And can accommodate all those types of, all those needs?
Every year we've had those sort of things in place. I know we're taking, one of the chaperones is going to be one of our aides. That's familiar with any of the kids that were going to be taken. And there's a nurse on staff 24 hours.
Any medical, any med considerations?
Well, we do, we take, there's a few kids that have EpiPens, I know. But would we take in those, you know, so.
And Nature's Classroom has been doing this for, for decades and with public school population, so they have, they are very conversant in students with needs.
And we're close to home, too.
And we're close to home.
I'll note the line that we stick with the process here for this field trip for this year and just keep it clean across the board. However, supporting what Ronnie said, absolutely think that we as the finance budget need to take a look at that for next year. And also, I have that in mind, knowing that if there are those couple of families that do need the help, that we'll make sure that we, that we help them to get through the Nature's. Yeah, it's just like it's cleaner to take a look at it and start fresh next year with a new budget, make sure we're accommodating all the field trips, perhaps at a lower cost. But as long as I know that, you know, the kids are, that can't necessarily, for this going to be taken care of for this particular field trip, I'd rather kind of start fresh next year with a new policy. That's my mindset anyways.
In light of that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sixth grade overnight field trip to Camp Isner in Great Barrington.
Can I have a second?
All in favor? Oh, sorry. I recommend that you approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is staffing updates. Danielle Carlo is, Brian is bringing her on as a special education teacher. She's replacing somebody who is depart, departing partway through the year. We are very excited and welcome Danielle to the LPS family.
Other than that, I, I lose track of these things. Do we have any other vacancies currently? Are we well-staffed?
We, we are trying to.
Always well-staffed, are we fully staffed?
Good point, yes. We're well-staffed, but not fully staffed. We, we have a retirement impacting French instruction and we're trying to work, we're trying to work through that, I expect within, that sometime this week, we will figure out something so that students will be able to have French instruction to the end of the year. The scoreboard naming recommendation, I, I want to, I want to, I want to commend Mrs. Graham for chairing this. This is the first time we've done it for equipment because we, there's a, there's a policy for naming facilities and fields and such, but not for equipment. So we had to ad hoc, put something together. And this first time through, they had to come up with a, a rubric for how to determine if somebody that was recommended was, was worthy of the recognition, if there were other people that were more worthy of that. And anyway, she did, and, and Springer was on that as well, as was, as was Dr. Ames. It was a, a committee that was represented, had students on it, staff on it. Anyway, they, they just did an outstanding job and, and vetted Peter Armit for, to have the scoreboard that, that the, the money came from Adams Community Bank. And I spoke with them and they do not have any issue with it being named. They, the only thing they've asked is there's a recognition that they funded it, a little plaque or something, we can do, we can do that. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
I just, I think it's, it would be nice for the committee to know what the criteria was. So it was very basic and I thank Jeremiah for helping me with that because we were able to get it done in one meeting because he was frantically next to me getting it down on paper. We actually had the rubric in front of us to then allow us to use that rubric for this particular piece of equipment. And, you know, my hopes is that this rubric could be used in the future should, should anything else come up. But just so you know, the, the criteria was a contribution to the school committee, alignment with our school values, legacy and recognition, connection to the piece of equipment, in this case, the scoreboard for athletics, community support, and then last but not least, character. And it was broken down and, you know, your highest score is a five, strongly meets criteria, three moderately, zero doesn't meet criteria. In this particular case, it was unanimous, unanimous for the whole committee and they all, they came out at 30 for everyone, top score for every, every single criteria. So I appreciate everybody that was on the committee. It was a, it was a thoughtful, it was a thoughtful process. I thought so, yeah.
Thank you for taking that on and leading it. So the process is that the committee makes a recommendation to me and then, and then I make a recommendation to you. And I confidently recommend that, that you name, allow the, the new scoreboard to be named after Peter Armit.
Could I ask, Peter, you were, can you just say a, a quick word about him and his?
So I, I do have, I don't have the, what I emailed you, do you have that, Bill? I think we, I think it was sent out to you guys and it's very long.
Oh, yeah, I just.
Basically founded Lennox Youth Basketball Association years ago. I remember it back at, back at Cameron. What was important to me, or kind of stuck out to me, is the monies that were brought in through Lennox Youth Basketball Association was not just put back into the players, into the uniforms, you know, obviously they, it wasn't just that. It was also back into the community. They put scoreboards up down at Morris. And they gave money to local camps within Berkshire County for camperships for the athletes and the students that were going to some camp. I'm sure I'm missing other names.
I just broke it up, if you'd like me to.
The gym floor. The gym floor, the gym floor. So it was monies raised not just for this or his particular program, it went back out into the community. It was a considerable amount of money, not to mention he's just a really good guy.
The Lennox Youth Basketball Association was founded by Peter Armit in the fall of 1987 with many contributions. Some of those contributions are Art Riley, Ray Dochin, Gary LaGarcia, Mike Ferris, Kathy Lyon, Jasmine and Chris Ryan, Dick Peretti, Fred LaFave, Gene Peters, Pignatelli Electric, Lou Bertocci, Lenny Miller and Gary Pignatelli. The intent of this program was to establish a self-sustaining program that consisted of a house league, instructional league, and a more competitive program made up of travel teams that played throughout the county and beyond. The first year, there was only 30 children who participated in these programs. The second year, the program tripled to 90 children and games were played on Saturday and Sunday at the old Cameron School Gym. During this year, the LYBA held its first fundraiser, which consisted of a foul shooting contest with prizes going to players who raised the most money. The event raised $4,400. While the program began to grow each year, the LYBA recognized that the floors at the Cameron School needed to be resurfaced. With the approval of the superintendent, the LYBA took on this huge undertaking fundraising, which consisted of a celebrity auction in 1989, making $12,000, allowed the YBA to resurface the Cameron School gym floor back to its original condition. The LYBA has been able to grow and improve because of the many fundraising efforts over the years and great support of many volunteers, coaches, parents, merchants, and who's supportive these programs, who supported these programs. Some other highlights of the programs over the years considered the purchase of $5,500 scoreboard, which is the connection there for the Lennox Memorial High School, hosted Williams College basketball team for instructional program to the children of, for three years, sponsored numerous boys and girls tournaments, sponsored numerous bus trips to William College and UMass to see games, sponsored bus trips to the Basketball Hall of Fame, sponsored travel teams playing in many parts of Massachusetts, including Boston and Cape Cod, purchased $3,000 scoreboard for the Morris Gym, sponsored players to summer basketball program.
And still, and still does the pancake. Well, it's an amazing program, so that's great, thank you. Great selection.
I have a procedural question.
Sure.
It sounds like you did a great job and came up with a rubric. Now what are we going to do with that rubric? Is that going to become policy?
So one of the, one of the things that, that Mr. Cast had suggested was that we take a, take a look at this and then bring what, if it works, bring it to the policy group to formalize it and have a policy for when, an official policy for when, or add to the existing policy for when pieces of equipment or substructures are. existing policy for when pieces of equipment or substructures are asked to be named instead of a whole school building wing or field.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So I think we figured we should try it. Like even the idea that we needed a rubric was sort of came out of this. And so now, in the sort of spring wave of policy revisions, we'll have one to update the naming process.
For the, for the rubric.
Yeah.
But since the school committee oversees the buildings, the facilities, all of the equipment, this is a topic for vote.
Ms. Graham, do you want to give us a motion?
So are we not out of the water then? Should we do the policy first and then follow the policy to make the award?
I think the hope was to have the, the award go through sooner.
Yeah.
For various reasons.
Yeah. And the absence of a policy, by default, would technically be Dr. Collins' decision to whatever he wanted. He's proposed that we cut through and have the committee sign off?
Let somebody else do the work.
I make a motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion to name the scoreboard as presented by Kim Graham.
Who presented by you?
I'll second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was in favor.
Okay. Are you abstaining or?
No, I'm just voting aye.
Okay.
Yep.
Lucy still carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the school choice and enrollment review, which happens at this time every year. So looking-
I apologize. Forgive me. We have one more session.
You, you, you're absolutely may if it's okay with the chair.
Thank you for raising that and let's do it.
So we'll go, we'll just put this one ahead of the next item with the innovate, innovation pathways overview.
since the beginning of the year as a topic. We wanted to learn a little bit more about strategic planning and otherwise. Ms. Romeo has been kind enough to come and tell us some more about it.
I make this very quick and simple. It's kind of exciting stuff. So thank you for having me. I'm Tara Romeo. I think I've met almost everybody here. I am the high school, school counselor and I run our internship program. And also I am one of two for Innovation Career Pathways. Pam Murray and I oversee that program. So Innovation Career Pathways, we call it Pathways, has been around since we started discussing it around twenty twenty-one, so right after COVID. And we're just trying to like reimagine sort of our career education program. Funny, I had a parent come up to me, who you probably all know, a long time ago, and said, you are a car manufacturer. You guys make like one car. And I was like, you're not wrong. So we're very much known, right, for the career college, the college pathways. So we did want to take a close look and lo and behold, our good friends at Monument pushed us along and we came up with the idea to apply for designation through DESI to be a healthcare and social assistance, along with business and finance pathway, a designation. The program is rooted in partnerships, that being the school with Mass Hire and local employers. So currently, these are our formal business partners locally. And just this past week, actually, I think Fairview Hospital, who is part of Virtual Systems, they're going to jump on board as well. So we have actual MOAs with them. We've all agreed to do certain activities for our high school students. So that's-
Surprise, Ken.
Yeah. I tried to use AI to make this diagram and I clearly need the paid version because it would not do it. Because this really kind of sums it up in a simplistic sense. The program started even before we were designated. There were some grants out there. We wrote them. And so in the last, since twenty twenty-one, we've received over two hundred thousand from grant funds. We were approved in April twenty twenty-two and that's a five-year designation. We are in year three, so we're in our review year right now. And like I said, our business partners are pretty much a critical component to this and Mass Hire, who have been truly the bedrock of all that we've done with this program. So the program in and of itself is really those four, the next columns, Strategies for Success and our Senior Expository Writing, those two courses are bookends to the actual program. We were lucky in that we have a middle school here. So Pathways, the intent of Pathways is to really reach into like middle school and elementary schools and start to build programming from the young, like younger students all the way through, we've gone to the academy middle school. So we, by design, Strategies actually came into being right when we were building these pathways. So getting Heather McNeese was actually very much part of us putting this program together because she had already been doing what's called Strategies for Success at other schools. Strategies truly teaches kids six through nine. It's required for every student. So you'll hear me say in a minute, Pathways, while it is for students that enroll in Pathways, we are reaching like all the student body just by virtue of having this already. So Strategies for Success is required. Ninth grade is when students are really jumping into the career exploration component, resume writing, interviews, MAC interviews, a lot of exploration, a lot of interest inventories. And they are all required to take it in ninth grade. And then when you jump ahead to senior year, they're kind of revisiting all of those topics again, in different ways, but very much the same. So with that, so in between ninth and twelfth grade, we're doing, students are required to do two advanced courses and two technical courses. So the program is intended to have curriculum that's paired with work-based learning. So depending on the program that they're in, they would take two technical classes to advanced classes. Around that, supplementing that is soft skills training, so work ethic, emotional intelligence type of training. MYCAP is required, which is a career and academic plan. They do that with us already. So that's also part of the Pathways program. So kind of in a nutshell, that's the basic framework. And there's tons that goes into that and a lot of people that make all that happen. The ultimate goal comes senior year is to leave school with credentials of some sort and having some experience in the workplace, training or internships, and they're required to be one hundred hours. With that, the hope is students graduate and they either have skills to get a, a good job that has a career path, that has benefit packages, that pays well, that to live in Berkshire County, they could be quite established coming right out of high school, or go into further training, vocational, any kind of training, or higher ed. And higher ed, they're going to have a nice resume, a nice application for college because they've done all of these things. So that's sort of that.
And so just on the advanced and technical classes, so are those sort of part of the standard LMHS elective offerings? Is, are they specifically developed for and available just for the kids who are on the pathway? How does that work?
In theory, it was meant to be a cohort. Like when you, when we first started looking into this, it was supposed to be small, right? We couldn't have a true cohort that went ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth in these very specific classes. So we developed this so that kids in the pathways have access and kids not in the pathways have access. And plus we're, some of these classes are pretty built into what we do every day, right? So like if you have advanced classes, that could be AP, it could be dual enrollment, it could be advanced honors levels. So those existed. We have added some, but by and large, they already are there. The technical, on the other hand, are not. So those are our courses like CNA, medical assisting, accounting, where things are truly specific to that career path, the Innovation Pathways. So let's see. Yeah. So this is, right now, we have, actually this morning, we had thirty-six students. We are enrolling, right now, we're in the middle of starting the master schedule for next year. So students are doing course selections literally as we speak. But this, are some of the pieces to each of the columns I just showed you. So the strategies and senior expository writing are kind of working tandem, about four years apart. The healthcare and social assistance and business finance pathway, they really are two very distinct things. Healthcare is taken off. Just, I think by virtual, just opportunity, there's, it's much easier to get licenses and certifications in healthcare right now. We've done CNA, we have, actually the next slide, we had CNA, we had medical assistant, we're the only school that we're aware of anywhere. Certainly in Berkshire County, I'm not even aware of any, like Western Mass, that offers the program in to the certification test here, right at the school. Students were able, we paired with, actually partnered with a couple of colleges, but right now, we're using BCC, the internal human body. So we've taken our human anatomy and we adapted it to BCC's human anatomy. Now kids get dual enrollment credit. So we're trying to build, the idea was to kind of build our program right directly into either training programs or college programs. So initially, healthcare immediately made sense to us because the way that BCC LPN program works, you can start some of those classes while in high school. So we kind of looked at what existed, what we thought would be easy to piece together. Again, BCC is a business partner. We work with their, their team over there and try and put things together. And we're still trying to do that. We'd love to do business in the same way. It's been a little trickier. Business pathway, again, a little slower to get off the ground just by virtue of trying to get, Microsoft Office licenses aren't as common as they once were, the Apple. So it's about a little trickier. So what we've decided is we're doing a business entrepreneurship class is kind of the core of it. And the school's actually, as you've heard, we're opening a school bookstore, which is very exciting. And the students are very much behind that. They are creating business plans and balance sheets. And we actually got those grants, the two hundred thousand plus is funded on a lot of what we're talking about, not just paying for the courses, but paying for all the materials to create this, to create a bookstore. Heather McNeese literally prints sweatshirts and makes the items she's selling. Like we have, we've got printers and presses and heat things that I'm not even sure how to use, but we have all of that. Last year, we piloted a real estate program. We're working with a real estate school in Boston area. We had a local Realtor that took our students. So we're trying to get that up and moving. We have three, I think four are going to be enrolled so far this year. So we're just trying to build those pieces together. Ideally, I'd love to see some kids get into the accounting. We're adding accounting too this, this coming year. That will be our second group taking that. So these are kind of the ideas of what we're working on. It's very much, again, we're in year three. So we, you know, we're still building. But these are some of the highlights. I think right now, you know, funny, today I met a kid and we were talking about classes and he wants to get a job. And he's like, well, I might have to wait till summer. And I'm like, yeah, I go to Tanglewood. All kids go to Tanglewood. And he's like, no, I'm going to be a medical assistant. He's in the program. He's going to be licensed. I'm like, of course, of course. You know, we have these partnerships in the area with Kimball Farms. They want our students. They're going to hire them and then they can work. They have student hours. They'll work school ranks, summers, weekends if they're home. So those are the big ones. We have CNA students that have gone through a CNA class that have then become CNAs, locally medical assistant, real estate licenses. Students that are eighteen or older can sell real estate. So these are essentially some of the highlights for the last couple of years. One of the cool things we did, we were able to get teacher internships for our science and business teacher. They spent a summer, spent fifty hours in local employer sites. Then they have since brought back those employers to the classroom. They've been men, they talk about all different careers. So it's just a matter of like all these connections on the network or buildings to then bring to the students. Then they get exposure, get some experience, and it's gone really well. Our, one of our highlighted students, you may have heard about, is Owen O'Brien Barbie. He did two internships in fitness and photography. Didn't like either, ended up trying the CNA program, went through CNA, was hired, was then picked up by Integris, Integris, to then do the McCann LPN program for free. You get paid to attend the program. You're guaranteed a job. You then could go on to do RN. So that's the kind of thing we're talking about. He didn't go four years, you know, he's not, he was very much intent on, maybe not even college at all, like going into photography. He has since gone entirely a different route. So those are some of the things we're working on and we think we're great. With any luck, we'll build, if the state wants us to have pathways for all students in like three years, four years. But right now, this is what we're working on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one question, please.
And I know you said working on additional pathways and doing all this great work, but I did see you were on there. And I know there's business, but is there also a component of hospitality? We have so much in hospitality, so many employers, MakeSure Hospitality, as well as Cannon Ranch and those others. Is there some-
Yeah. So hospitality-
-conversation about that?
The pathways are actually based on critical sectors. So sector, basically within Berkshire County, we're the needs, employment needs. So we're trying to build like a pipeline for skilled employees. So hospitality is huge on that list.
Yeah.
So our business is actually kind of just more on hospitality than-
Oh, that's under fire, but that's where you've had a lot of competition, yeah.
Those, and that's where we've had kids at New York Hall. And we've had more luck in hospitality than probably any other. Real estate now is kind of, it's picking up a bit. I think that's going to be good. But yeah, hospitality is where-
Oh, okay. So yeah, so seeing the business, it was, a lot of the ways that the students are actually engaging in internships is in the business of hospitality.
Yes.
Okay.
They're just easier, obviously they're just more accessible.
Yes. As has the banking.
Banking is like, I'm like, you have to be eighteen. So yeah. So those are the little things we run into with hospitality. They're like, want students desperately. I don't know. It's pretty willing to get them.
I have a question, quick question. A hundred hours work-based learning, is that, how's that, is that challenged then with schedules, with balancing school and balancing life in general?
Yeah, in year three. So really next year is the year we're kind of on the line, right? So it will be tricky, to be honest. So what we did was really nice when we applied, we actually spoke specifically about those challenges. Our students tend to overload themselves. And what they agree to is weekends, nights, summers. So what I, I imagine many students would be done this in the summer. Not all. I mean, we do have students every year that do internships and leave school. But I would say I've got a lot of internships because we'll have to, everyone has to do a hundred hours and it's tricky, right, to fit into a full course of activities and sports. And they're not all paid, so it pays for jobs. So yeah, there's a lot of variables. Next year is going to be, we're gearing up for it, but we're going to have to place a lot of kids to make that happen. So there's a whole bunch of flexibility built into our designation for that reason.
And so if a student does want to do an internship during the school year, does it essentially become a class, like that they're getting credit for and it has to fit in their schedule?
Exactly.
And then you're supervising them or someone from the staff is there?
Right, right. And then it runs the game. As soon as that, you know, they're in school for two classes, English and math, and then they're gone. Or there's a student who might be one day a week, last period. So it really does run the game. But it's credit, you know, they get credit. It's on their schedule. Even if they go after school, it's still on their schedule. And there's some requirements that go along with that. And there's some checking that we do around, they don't check what the folders and get some evaluations that are done. So I mean, that's the benefit of like, you know, people like, oh, vocational, vocational. Like it's hard to imagine us as like a vocational school or a chapter seventy-four school because we're so small, but we are small in that the benefit of that is working really individually with each kid. So we really, I mean, you know, best, very, like we put things together individually for students. Now we're trying to formalize it and make more of a platter, you know, a menu. We're working towards that while still trying to personalize it and make it that for every kid.
So as you think about expanding it, because everyone eventually, are you, how much of that is, we need to add five more different pathways versus we need to deepen business and medical or healthcare? business and medical or healthcare to accommodate a lot more?
Yeah, well, probably a few more pathways, okay. But there is, I mean, business, we've been facing with the business teachers, right, we have one teacher, so, trying to, like, have teachers that focus on those pathways directly, even we're using online resources, colleges, things like that, it's a fair amount of work still, to really make, um, yes, or as robust as they can be. Probably a little both to your answer, like, yes, more depth, more offerings.
But, and then you also said, and tailoring for some students, for example, we were talking about first responders, maybe it's medical, maybe it's also law enforcement, but there's a lot of resources in our community that students can do internships, and you can adopt for students that want that, for example.
That's for sure.
But, so, doesn't necessarily mean adding a whole, here's all the classes you take, but supporting the students from engaging, with engaging in what's available within the community.
Right.
How did the students find out about the pathways program?
So we're doing a lot of, um, discussion, like, at the class-wide events, so we do, we just did a meeting at every level, and we'll talk about it there. We're supposed to also, this year, talk about it in the eighth grade parent night, or, so we're trying to get it out there as much as often. Part of our program goal is to reach all the underrepresented populations, we're targeting small students who have disabilities, so we're trying to work with those departments to, um, make sure those students try and get them on board. We've been super successful with that, um, so part, our groups, that's one of the best parts, actually, is that our medical system program and our human anatomy class, they're so diverse, the group of students in there are not typically put together, so it's like, yeah. Kids are select, it's a really nice part.
Back to the enrollment.
Uh, one of the things that was just touched upon was this, um, uh, MOA with a local hospital. We have a senior, a young woman who's interested in nursing profession, and this MOA is going to allow her to do an internship, um, in the OR of the hospital. So if that's something you want to do, and you get that experience as a senior in high school, I mean, kudos, that's incredibly impressive. All right. So there are, uh, there are three grades in which we'll be looking to take in, um, school choice for next year. Kindergarten, we are looking at, uh, a potential of twenty-three openings, which would bring the class size to forty-eight, which, um, Principal Kelly is ideally looking for sixteen for each of the three grades, and that's what that would do. In grade one, adding three, which would bring that up to forty-eight and make that sixteen. And then, uh, we have four siblings, I think the original sheet that you had had three, there's actually four siblings in sixth grade, and we'd be hoping to add all four of those that would bring that class to sixty-one. It, it still keeps the total, uh, choice at, um, under, under forty-three, but very high, forty-two point nine three percent.
And so that would be without adding anybody headed into ninth grade?
Right.
Potentially?
Right, zero ninth grade.
That way, no, I kept speaking.
Questions, students?
Bill, are we, does this, are we entertaining, um, choice for, uh, we're just, anything that's a zero means we're not even entertaining choice students for those, or we just don't have anyone interested in?
Well, we're, we're really, if you look over, um, at the, the class sizes and the percentage of, and the percentage of choice?
Yeah.
Over there, um, and typically, we don't look to add in grades eleven and twelve anyway, because you really, if you've come through, if you've come through another system to then come in at the very end, for us, it can be hard to, um, hard to adapt and have met all the requirements and such, so we don't, try not to complicate that. But, uh, really, at this point, we're sort of full, and we're maintaining by adding in at, at kindergarten, and then looking to, again, bring in those siblings, uh, into sixth grade, and, uh, and, and round out the first grade with one more student per class, to bring it up to sixteen. And that would make, if filled, that would make the total for Morris, including the pre-K at three thirty-one, and the total for LMHS at four forty, with the total for the district, again, including pre-K, at seven seventy-one.
So we're still able to, when I look at the percentages here, I, I see that we're able to kind of have somewhat high percentages in some grades, because we have, because balanced out by low percentages in, like, we have a good, the ninth grade, and it's got forty-two percent, that allows us to bring in a larger percentage, and...
Exactly. And if you look at, for example, eighth grade, you can see that the resident population, and it's just what it, what it is, is twenty-six, so there are more, uh, choice students when you go across. It's fifty-five percent choice, but that's because that year is particularly low in the number of resident students.
Right, right. And then in terms of actually bodies, uh, students in the classrooms, is, is there, putting choice percentages aside, is, is there, is there sort of a critical mass, a number we would like to see in, in each grade or cohort, something along those lines?
Yeah, um, great, great question. We are, we really feel that we are at the, the sweet spot, which is sort of why we're maintaining it, right? We could, we could certainly take more, right, we could take more, we have, far more students want to, um, come here than we have open slots. However, what we don't want to do is overburden the system, we also don't want to be so small that we can't offer some of the classes, that we can't field some of the athletic teams that we field. We are, we are somewhat, um, dependent on that, but if we can maintain, but if we can maintain our enrollment numbers where we are, we're, we're in a, we're in a really good spot, um, for that critical mass, to, to your point, yeah.
What, what is the resident tuition number? Like, the four in ninth grade and the one in fifth, and the, is that, and then is it withdrawal? Are the, I'm looking in the, you know, twenty-twenty-five, resident tuition, was there, is that withdrawal? WD?
So, we, we do take in, we do, we do have some, uh, tuition, we do have some tuition students in from when Richmond finishes at grade eight, so you can see the grade nine, like, four.
Yeah.
I think he's asking a different question than the answer. The top of that kind of says, kids, these are known changes to our existing, um, enrollment that we already know about for next year. So we know of a fifth grader who won't be coming back from fourth grade to fifth grade next year. We know of, um, a choice student in tenth, or, I'm sorry, ninth grade this year who won't be coming back for tenth grade next year. So I plug those in as we, as they are identified at the school level, so we have a little bit of a more accurate read for next year, instead of waiting till the end of the year or August when they don't show up.
I don't think they can hear you.
Oh, okay.
So that is withdrawal, WD is withdrawal?
Yes, yes, so it's a resident or tuition that we know of is moving in, in the first slot, um, I'm sorry, that's somebody actually coming in for fifth, fifth grade, and the other two are choice, existing choice student that we know is withdrawn, or an existing resident that we know is moving on, which is, um, so we have the current enrollment in the first section, any known changes to that, um, current enrollment for next year, and then any choice openings that might arise based on the side, size of the class.
And the next block of three over is projections?
Yeah.
Where we project, and the, this is stuff that we know at this point, as we sit here.
So do we actually have any tuition of these, or do we have any tuition students?
We do, we do, we, uh, we have tuition students that come in from?
Rich, yeah.
From Richmond.
If you look at the four column from the left, under current enrollment, it says resident, choice, and tuition, those are current tuition students by grade.
So are the four under the known changes, are they residents or tuition?
Those are tuition.
Awesome.
Yeah, um, that, that's kind of a guess, that's about what we usually get.
Okay.
Plug that in, right now, I guess it's not a known change, it's an anticipated change, um, but I just, I, there's only so many categories I can put in.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, we, we typically get about four Richmond tuition students each year entering in ninth grade, right before we have one applicant, but they usually slide in at the last minute, because, um, I don't know why, but my assumption is they know they can get in, there's not, and they, and choice slides in at the last minute, too, it's not a first come, first serve, it's, if you're in by the deadline, you're in lottery, so, but there is no lottery for Richmond tuition, we, we plan.
So then, where, how do, do those residents, those tuition students would then be calculated as residents for choice percentages?
Yes.
For the, so they're not in the thirty-eight, let's see, taking a look at ninth grade next year?
No, they're not in thirty-eight or twenty-five.
Okay.
Was there a motion we needed here, or this was just a?
Uh, this is just, uh, so what the, what the state says is that unless you are going to, um, stop school choice, or start school choice, you, you don't need to vote. But historically, um, historically, what you've done here, you always can, and historically, what the school committee has done is they say, um, they make a vote and say, um, yes, with some discretion for the superintendent, depending on the circumstances, um, that may change, but you do typically, yes.
If I'm correct, under the policy now, though, the policy we just adopted, which got tweaked a little bit more, over the last couple of years, we've actually made a policy that in January, we vote relative to the school choice slots that are available based upon your recommendations, so that it can be finalized by the end of the month, right?
Correct, so our, right.
Policy exists, we vote.
The motion would essentially be to approve the recommendation to open choice slots in kindergarten, first and sixth grade for the coming year, subject to...
Right, and you would leave discretion if, right, tomorrow, five residents moved out of a particular grade, for me to be able to fill those?
Yeah.
So would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'm happy to do it. So I move that we approve the continuation of school choice and the opening of school choice slots in kindergarten, first grade, and sixth grade, as proposed and recommended, with discretion for the superintendent in the event that was a major change after this type.
Oh, so good.
All in favor?
Just waiting to see if Amy's ready over there. Tucking away.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Amy, for being so good at tracking all this. You're the guru.
All right. And final update is the very exciting MSBA process.
Yes, so the Massachusetts School Building Authority oversees, um, school, school buildings in which the, in which the Commonwealth is contributing toward and overseeing the, the process. And so last December, every, every year, every year, we, um, submit to them, but, you know, looking around left and right at our neighbors and stuff, uh, based on the experience of others, we sort of came to the conclusion that we were, we were not likely to be picked very soon, and didn't want to wait as indeterminate amount of time, so, uh, we said, well, what can we do to have a project that, that's affordable and is a just right fit for our needs? Um, and so we began that process, and we had a feasibility, we had a feasibility study, um, and yet, we still, there was nothing to lose, so we still continued to, um, submit an application to MSBA, uh, and this, last December, we were notified, uh, that we were invited into the eligibility period, which doesn't guarantee that you're in, that it, it gets you on the, sort of on the conveyor belt, and if, if you check all the boxes, um, then, um, then you can, uh, be part of the, the next step in the MSBA process. So the start of the eligibility period is May first. We have a meeting, we asked for a one-on-one, a one-district meeting, they've assigned our project coordinator, and we've asked for a one-district meeting that is taking place tomorrow with Bob Vaughn, the chair of the, the school building committee, town, uh, Dr. Ames, and, um, and Melissa, and myself, to ask some questions, because what we want to find out is, the work that we've done so far, how much of that can we, can we move forward with? How much of that needs to be replicated? How much can we, you know, we, we use or repackage for them? What can we recoup out of that? And then additionally, um, we, uh, we want to know, so May first is the official start date, but can we do all sorts of pre-work, so when May first comes, we can say, here you go, right? Here's everything that you, here's everything you'd be looking for if the May, if, if we started on May first and took several other months, could we actually get all that work, pre-work, and then on May first, when they open up the, um, our eligibility day, could we just give them, could we give them all of that? So that's kind of what we're trying to sort out with, sort out with them. And then, uh, and then Bob Vaughn is going to have, uh, have a meeting on Thursday, the committee, to, um, sort of debrief on what happened in the one-on-one meeting, and, uh, and then we will chart a course based on that. So where do we go from here, knowing now what the parameters and the guardrails are, what we can use, what we need to do new, and, um, and at that point, then, um, the idea would be to, um, I mean, bring, bring him to your meeting on the twenty-seventh to speak to, okay, this is what we know, and now looping you in on everything we know and the, and the proposed charting of the course.
Is there a prospect, just thinking that May first happens to be within a couple of days of town meeting?
Yes, so it's one of the questions is, one of the questions is, what can we, are there things that we can do simultaneously? Is it, is it forbidden or not for us to maybe ask, um, the town to propose some things that we know we're going to need, um, instead of waiting until the next town meeting?
Because this town meeting wouldn't be the entire amount, anyway, it would be the architectural.
Right, and, and to that point, to find out exactly what, what we do need, will they allow us to, for example, they may say, gee, your feasibility study does this much, and we need ones that is this much, but you can, you can just add that on, or do you, are they going to say, we need to start from scratch? But we'll know more after tomorrow.
So if I heard you correctly, on our meeting on the twenty-seventh, that will be the update as to what you learn in these next two weeks. So for those of us who really appreciate all the work you're doing, we'll have a chance to hear more on the twice half.
And, uh, and Mr. Remmler and Mr. DuPont are, sit on, um, sit on that committee, um, as well.
Thank you for that. David, and...
Yeah.
Work.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. That's, that's everything I have.
There's no other urgent business, we need to adjourn briefly to a, an executive session to update the committee on the ongoing collective bargaining conversations.
Make a motion for, yeah, or, okay. So make a motion to adjourn to executive session, to, for the purpose of MGL, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-three, to discuss, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining without intent to return to regular session.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
And I think we need a roll call vote.
Veronica, ten and nine.
Bob Munch, aye.
David Remler, aye.
Lauren Cass, aye.
Michael Dupont, aye.
Kim Winger, aye.
Kim Graham, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.